Over for the meeting, Nelson City Council, August the 17th, 2020. I'd like to take a moment and have a moment of prayer for the Holy Spirit. Father God, we thank you for today. Lord, we just ask that you would be there, as we ask that you would lead down and let each one of us here today make the decision to make the best decisions possible. Help us to write with the God, publish with the God, and to come together at the union. Father, we ask that you be with our servicemen and women, our police officers, our EMT, firefighters, and our servicemen here and overseas. Father, we thank you for today, and we just ask that you would bless us and be with us. Jesus, amen.
James, would you please send the quote back into quotes?
I'm glad allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion from the council to move, discuss, adopt, and adopt the changes in the fire service agreement with Cherokee County to five?
You want to do that with B and C?
SDS and five?
I think y'all just need the fires, the time crunch, the timeline for the fire line.
Well, they're here, we're going to do B and C. I'd like to have anything, if we have any questions about the SDS.
There we go.
Okay. That way you can get brought in. I'd like to get a motion to move B and C, the SDS Cherokee County, and the adoption of fire services agreement with Cherokee County to five. Do I get a motion?
I make a motion that we move nine B and nine C to public appearance.
Do you have a second?
I'll save it.
James? All right. With our changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Jeff, we need to remove, we're just going to discuss the building requirements for tonight, we're just going to discuss it.
Do it, just go vote.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I need a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the change.
Second. Okay. Now I have public appearance.
Vote on that. Vote on that. You got a first and a second, maybe you can vote yet.
All right. Yeah. All right. All righty. If you would like to come, Mr. Cooper, and discuss the SDS with Cherokee County. The list will be up there.
You want to start with the fire thing, or you want to start with the SDS? But I know there's a time crunch on the fire one, so give it one. It could be more significant.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, just to be honest with you, I'm glad I could be with you today. My name is Jerry Cooper, I'm the county manager of Cherokee County. It's been a pleasure working with the mayor and you guys over the many years I've been here. So, thanks again for allowing me to be with you tonight. Service delivery strategy. State of Georgia requires counties and municipalities to do all services provided and accounted, and then come to an agreement on the various services. There's 56 different Form 2s in your packet, ranging from airport to code enforcement to fire, road maintenance, parking and reg. This is a legion of different services. Now, some of these Form 2s are not applicable to the city of Nelson, and that's noted in the packet for you. But we have a deadline this year, October, to adopt the Form 2s and submit those to Department of Community Affairs. And for their review, and once adopted by everyone, then we are in full compliance with the state.
And councilman and I reviewed those and made a list, and I believe your attorney has made its changes in that.
Everything that has, all the changes, I am currently in this, so everything they did, they have to, I think they saw it later.
Looking for any questions you may have.
Has anybody had an opportunity to review these SDS?
I believe there's some of them, I appreciate you coming.
Well, councilman and I did, we went through and everything that we had that was in here. For example, they had a standard for code enforcement and building inspections. We had them removed. We had them removed Nelson and just leave Alaska there, and they've made those changes for us. So, and we do appreciate that. It was last minute apologies for that, so I believe that we have a clear packet now, so that's good, and based on what our new dollar and what's been agreed to by the council. Can we go put a note during this time? I'll go ahead and just ask each council member, so Councilman Hamby, Nathan Hamby, do you have any questions regarding SDS?
How about is there anything with changes with regards to?
It's a 10-year agreement.
It's not, the things that they added in there that were not supposed to be in there, we had them removed, and we sent that, that's what this is.
That's the pay chair.
That's the list.
We're still taking care of the same stuff, we've been taking care of.
Yes, and can expand, thank you, Mr. Cooper, at any time we need to for the city. So, Councilman, or Councilwoman, Martha, do you have anything? Okay. James, no. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the SDS for Cherokee County?
I make a motion to approve SDS for Cherokee County.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Martha Bayless? Mayans, thank you. Next up is adopt changes to the fire services agreement with Cherokee County. I'm really glad that we came out to discuss this one. I got it, and I understand we're rolling back some and doing some other things in order to make everybody happy in the, outside of the city limits. So, but I'll let you explain that.
It's become complicated. However, we're just changing one decision in the agreement, that section three A, that's how you calculate the payment of fires for fire services. City representatives in the last few months have encouraged us to use insurance premium tax, which is being used for services that are permanent benefit of unincorporated residents. And so with that request, we moved down this path of setting free public appearances, and we did have conducted three. One is open, we'll finalize that this evening. And what that does is fire service district rate, which is tonight, it'd be 3.483. Shouldn't be any change in what you had, other than, you know, a slight difference in the rate. Our current rate now is 3.269, it increased to 3.483. That's just the personnel and the salary increases and those things, try to keep up with the market. But what we've done, we've taken that IPT and transferred those funds, a lot of those funds, into the fire district. Which for unincorporated, you can only use it for unincorporated services. We can't use it for services provided to cities. So what we've done is in the formula, we've taken that to IPT revenue, and where the formula is written, it's as if we calculate the same way we calculate today. And so we'll be transparent when we do that with you, that the rate for you is 3.483. The rate for unincorporated is about 2.173. But we use about 10 million of the IPT revenue to offset fire district rates. Now, general fund rates, I actually increased too because of the loss of revenue. But overall, our rates are the same throughout all the three, the general fund, fire, and department. Overall, it hasn't changed, it's 8.965 for all three.
Yeah, I know that when Jeff came out, he explained that to us, and he did a great job explaining it, and I said, you're going to have to come back. I knew that it kind of stayed the same, but your numbers changed on both sides to make it even, so.
So maybe it'll be an increase on the tax bill to cover this?
No, if you look at the way we, if we didn't move the IPT into the fire district, and we calculated the rate, it's as if we calculated the rate the same we do today. There'll be a change in rate because of the increase in salaries, a slight increase for the IPT.
Like our fire tax last year was 92,000, it's 96 last year.
And I think if they use that rate, my, if I calculate your rate, it would have been different, it would have been a couple thousand dollars. It wouldn't have been.
Wouldn't it increase for you?
Yeah, it's based on the actual valuation of taxes, and when it comes out, it comes from money that we receive from the tax instead of paying it in a tax. It's not kind of that long, the general fund, but it's based on.
Do you have any questions, councilman? Can I get a motion to approve and adopt the changes to the fire service agreement with Cherokee County?
I make a motion to approve and adopt the, what did you say?
Fire services agreement with Cherokee County. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All right. Mayans, thank you. We do appreciate you being able to sign before you.
I appreciate you. Back out for a minute.
Thank you. All right. Next up is I have six approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for July 23rd, 2020?
I'm not going to vote for the next, you want about 23rd, 24th?
Give me a second.
Second.
All right, favor. Mayans, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for July 27th, 2020?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, July 27th.
We'll get a second.
Second, then.
All right, favor. Mayans, thank you. Okay. Next up is department reports. Council, could you deliver our police reports to us this afternoon?
Well, the Senate said this for the chair, said that until we had 12 calls for service, the meeting got pushed back from August 3rd, so this was for the, actually for the live calls. Two armed calls, one domestic, two suspicious persons, one suspicion activity, reinformation, one accident, one firearm discharge, one harassing phone call. So it was domestic, it was verbal, and we ended up restating, nothing else.
All right. Next up is mayor reports. Earlier today, I received a call from Steve Johnson, formally withdrawing his candidacy for the November 3rd, 2020 Nelson, City Council seat. So we'll make sure that the supervisory elections has a copy of this and make sure all the elections are, I think, set.
Yeah, I guess see what they need, they need anything more than that, or none?
I think he, so he had delivered this today, I believe that he's already delivered a copy to them as well, but we'll just make sure on our end that they have it.
Certainly one candidate, is that correct? There won't be any election? Unless there's a primary or something.
I don't know of any.
There's no way out, there's.
Yeah, nobody else registered, just one. So how does that work? Does she wait till November the 3rd to take the seat? Does she have to have a vote at all, or?
I get confused about my seats, and I didn't look in advance. Which seat is this?
Yeah, it's a little over a year.
Okay, so this is a filling and vacant seat, correct? I believe that after the period passes for any potential, right, when does qualify go?
Well, it's 7, 20, 29. So qualify was then approved.
I think there's seven days for write-ins, but that has already passed. But I believe it is that the remaining candidate would get the seat. You may have to officially call off the election, I'll check on that, see if you need to vote to do that, but she would go ahead and take the seat.
I'll check before.
At your next meeting.
Okay, at the September meeting? Okay. Could you verify?
Well, we just did a campaign.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, because they were, they were trying to, they're qualifying to try that, they had one candidate, they wanted to take the seat tonight, but they had to wait such days. We already have that seven days.
We're making the same thing.
All I need to check is to see if you can actually vote to cancel the election. She would go ahead, regardless, she would go ahead and be sworn in at your next election.
Okay. Go ahead and get all the paperwork and stuff that we hand out, moves, you know, mechanics. The next thing is Miranda will be out tonight, everybody who knows her, but she did put, I believe she took her financials in here for a review, and they were in the packet that was handed out as well. So, does anybody have any questions for us to take back to her on the financials? The next thing is the fire report.
And this was for the second quarter. And it shows that there were total incidents inside the city, we had a total of 16, the overall for Cherokee County was 4,036. Ambulance transports, there were a total of seven. You know, there weren't structured fires, there wasn't response time for those. Average response time to EMS incidents, nine minutes, 27 seconds. And I get percentile response time to EMS incidents, it shows 11 minutes and 37 seconds.
Is Picking responding to EMS incidents, I don't know if you're flashing up here, or? How is Cherokee?
I don't know, if they, like if there's an emergency or something, then they may.
I know in my neighborhood, it's Cherokee, but I'm not sure here. I did ask Miranda to see if she could get a representative to give us a report from the Picking side, part in September, so hopefully we'll have something. I asked her a couple of times, but I think there's been a lot going on there. Let's move on down to eight unfinished business, an update on how a fire repair facility works.
It's just her, I didn't put anything in here. And I talked to Cherokee County about the road repair that I have, Kinsley Avenue. And last I heard, they were looking at the period in August, beginning of September, on doing, getting the bunks trimmed down and getting some of that road fixed and doing it the same way. Maybe it's on another area, too, I'll do it in the next, but they're looking at it in August, beginning of September, to get that stuff fixed. So there were delays due to weather, and then delays due to, because all the road mess was messing up.
Did that patch is repaired, did that ever?
Yeah, that was on the other part, so something to go look at, actually, one of them, I'm going to go ahead on, it's $1,500 bucks. And the other one, is a good, a lot more, a lot more for that's, so anticipation. It's 90, you could wait till the area.
Oh, 90. I thought you were talking about 9 grand.
No.
Did we add on here to the project? The, I may discuss and vote on photography for the city website.
Keith had talked about it last time, he was here, he was looking at, or showing us the website stuff. And I guess he had talked to several different companies, and one that actually sent a bid back in to him, had given a price of $300. And I guess there were seven different categories he asked for prices on, and it covered all seven. There were, I can't remember, he said that like four functions he talked to, but the one that actually submitted the bid is the one he said he actually had seen at work and recommended them for.
Well, a friend of mine who also does photography upcoming, and she's substantially more, she's about $100 to come out, make a trip out and do the stuff, so.
Yeah, my new stuff, and it's, yeah, it's expensive.
What's the company name?
Links of the website is there. This literally came in, this afternoon, it was posted, so I read for it. David Jacobian, it looks like, is right before the last section where it says here's his website. There's a link.
Is that what you pronounce that?
I hope so, that's how I pronounced it. But I can send you, forward the email to you if you want to look at the website.
Paul J. Brown.
He's local.
Yeah. He's local.
Any questions?
It's in a form, it is under the threshold of stuff to do, but it's, we've been talking about. Want to make sure they're rates on the same range with it.
That way you have to.
Yeah, well, that's a good thing to discuss, as.
So is anybody, nobody has any, nobody has any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the photography for $300?
I make a motion to approve $300.
Can I get a second? All right. Discuss and vote on Picking's Chamber of Commerce visitors, I know that we did this last year.
This is a different one, I thought it was the same thing.
Oh, it looks like the same.
One's a tourism map, and then one is, it's two different things, but they sent us out, and they want to know who advertising this one, so. They said it could be good for tourism and for the Marvel Museum.
One second, you guys. I know we did it, we did it once. How much is that?
They have it.
$595 for a court page.
A full page, $50.
A quarter page is just 3.5.
Yes.
I wrote spin it down, it's something, everybody agrees in bed, they have, actually I have.
Harson, okay.
I was thinking to not do it.
Okay. Pardon? Anybody else have any comments on it? Nathan?
No.
James?
One, no.
No.
But if you're concerned, Sarah, Nathan and I have talked about something with similar, close regional permission, with some of the stuff that we do need to be doing. I know this year, they canceled like Marvel Fest and all of that stuff, so a lot of the stuff we would be advertising for is canceled, so I can see not doing it, this should be something more formal.
Right. For this website, we should, we would advertise it.
Yeah, but these are like, they put them in the different locations.
It puts Nelson on the map, so to speak, and we're encouraged to do that for some reason.
Yeah, with one apple, that's reality, but what they're doing, lives in this year.
But yeah, this year, I agreed, I think the money could be spent wisely somewhere else, so. We were going to, so we discussed it, and we're not going to vote on it to do it, they're just going to say we're not doing it.
Not doing it.
Okay.
If nobody votes to do it, you're not doing it.
Yes. Okay. Next is I have nine new business to discuss, and I discussed the possibility of adding lights to the ball field.
This is just a special, I think, in here, we've got one team running the ball field right now, and they're there Tuesday and Thursdays, but it's starting to get darker early, and once we have the time and change, and one is done, it's possible. Or that we, would have any, if there was any possibility of us adding one, expect out there, so they can continue to use the ball field, do the ball.
We don't know how, we don't have a red for, we don't have.
Yeah, I think they did it last, no, that's the reason we had them cut down, you know.
I told them.
When we did the thought, you know, I was on council before, and it was a tremendous amount of power, it was very lax, right?
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I did, we got priced.
I knew that there would be a.
I just wanted to see if there was any.
I knew that there would be a cost associated. Any questions on that? Next step is I have, I've already done B and C, we're going to go to D, which is discussing more fee schedule. I went back and looked at our policies, and we did have a fee schedule in there, but I was talking with James earlier, and he said he thought it was changed in 2011. Regardless, it was still out of date, if you guys need a little bit more information on that, I can get it, but currently, right now, we need to make sure that we have, we're covered for second visits, and if we, for some reason, you know, failed an inspection, that we're covered for second visits, third visits, and then if it's a third visit, then it, I think in our old, the old policy was like a $250 charge.
It's from here, it's the first page of this one. First thing is $55, second one's $100, third one's $250. The problem is, is we have this fee schedule, it's very in-depth, it covers every possible thing you could charge anybody for, bathroom fans, every single one, make sure you put your house, I mean, I'm a nitty gritty, you can do anything in your house. The problem is, here we have our little little packet that we use to give out, and you flip over to reinspection fee on the second page, and it says first turn down $25, second turn down $50, third turn down $75, which contradicts what's in our fee schedule. I don't know which one was done first, which. Which contradicts what's in our fee schedule, I don't know which one was done first, which one, this one was, but this is the packet that I'm supposed to use when people fill out, this is what we have on account now. So I can't charge people within this fee schedule, which is much more realistic when the one that I give them fill out, so that's not the case.
Do you remember, Jim, any, uh, when, when something may have been approved that differs from what's in our policy vote?
I do not remember, which ones?
The fee schedule is in which? The fee schedule that's here, I took out of the, like, the actual fee schedule book, and it says it was approved, um, May second, two thousand and eleven.
Well, imagine, that looks to be more recent than the fact.
Yeah, I would think so too, but this is all I have, as far as when people come in to do permits, like the packet of stuff that we use to.
Cross out the fees and attach the new one, or redo it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, I, we've been going through and just looking at the stuff, like for other counties and stuff, and it's just, even like the, like the math problems, like to get to the fees and stuff, it, like a CEO, basically, you do, you take square footage, multiply it times forty dollars, and you multiply it times point zero zero two five. Basically, if you take away the square footages and remove your decimal point two points, that's your equation right there. Instead of doing this complex math problem.
Why you don't wanna do that?
Well, I'm just saying, it's like, it just, there's not a whole lot of logic to it, whereas if you go to like.
Comprehensive, so I had to come from somewhere or somebody's recommendation, not on.
Yeah, well, you go to like Pickens, like their CEOs, it's done by square foot, like two thousand square feet, it's hundred twenty-five, of the two thousand, it's one fifty. It just kinda gives a breakdown without getting super specific.
You know, not just adopt what they've done.
Well, and that's what I have there, that we, to kinda give you an idea, and we don't need to adopt every single thing that they have in there, but they get to where it's not, instead of trying to, to give somebody a fee for every outlet they have in their house, or if they put a bath fan in, and if they, you know, we're, we're literally giving them fees for every single thing that they do, you feel like a base permit fee, plus there might be something little on top of that, and it just, it simplifies the process, you know, who's gonna honestly take the truth how many outlets are put in somewhere, they gotta go in and.
What's the, what's their fee schedule on the re-inspections?
It's all, I mean, all of that's, it's all in here, like their entire reinspection fee for building inspections, each one is fifty bucks.
See, that is, that is twenty-five dollars.
Thirty, fifty, depending which one, what inspection it is.
It used to re-inspector twenty-five dollars.
Well, that's what this does, is that we charge twenty-five, the packet that we're using, says twenty-five dollars. But I have to pay him between thirty and fifty.
Yeah, that, see, my life's going over that.
So I mean, I know these are wrong, but I can't give them these fees if the packet I give them says this. I ran it, when somebody fails, they usually only fail one time, so it might be five bucks the, the difference, but it's not a drastic difference.
I know we mentioned last meeting too, that the Pickens County fee schedule was more in line with, with Milton's fee schedule. It's a little bit different in some places, but I think it's, um, I don't think it's near as, um, aggressive as Cherokee's, as far as toward the.
Yeah.
I don't wanna burden anybody, but I do think that we need to send that.
They will be, that's more, more of Pickens County.
I'm, I'm relaxed.
Well, we are, you were using Pickens County, how, they was carrying stuff too.
Instead of, I don't wanna vote on it tonight, when you're voting on it, and it's me, if you wanna continue, whatever, but I just need something, because everything's completely, like, I can't give somebody a packet that says this, you know, twenty-five dollars and then hit them with a fifty dollar fee.
I mean, I think all, all the information is here, but, um, they can.
But I mean, do you wanna do all, everything, and here are you gonna take out, because this has for alcohol, it has for, it basically would replace our entire bill, which I'm fine with, I mean, I don't see an issue with it.
Good.
But, um, it has landfills, it has everything, which I believe we have in ours as well, but it just, it doesn't get to, I mean, this, like, their fee schedule is like, this is the entire fee schedule for Pickens County, it's like five or six pages, we have a book. It's literally, I mean, the, the stuff that's here.
Then you've got to simplify, you don't, you're absolute errors, you can add all those things.
This is just the ones for construction.
Yeah, and, and I think that's what I was getting to, I think that it does simplify things, so.
This is ours.
Yeah. And I think as a, as a community, we would benefit from it.
Yeah.
Our fee book is probably not, but the fee schedule for everyone.
If you, it'll simplify, might need you on everybody that's, what's going to do that, I think, well, you gotta go for everything. If y'all see anything.
Well, I mean, I've looked over, I don't see any issue with it, and even, I've compared it to Cherokee's, it's actually fairly similar to Cherokee, so if Cherokee, Cherokee hits you with the impact fees on the house, which, which Pickens doesn't.
Or new building.
Yeah, but it kind of.
And that impact fee's like twenty-six hundred dollars, yes, it's extensive, so if somebody was to put something over two hundred square feet, or, or property, you're gonna get hit with that.
You see any that matter with us both on it tonight?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions before we move on and away? I think you have anything.
Is there anything in there, um, about what you don't, things you can do without hitting our bed? Just Pickens have.
Pickens doesn't have a list, and I've been on the phone with them numerous times this week, even though like whenever I talked to them, the answers were actually very similar to what Cherokee did, and I had conversations with them ours, and Sylvia this week too. And even the stuff that Cherokee has, because I have that's in the next section, um, a lot of that's taken from the International Building Code, I think there are a lot of it's just copy and paste it, and it's very, it's still very generic. So it's not, um, you're not getting into these super specified lists, like we have par fee schedule where, yes for this, yes for this, where you've been, because you're gonna come into situations with everything, where there's an exception to every rule. But it does, like, if you're changing your footprint of your house, if you're changing, like, with your roofline, if you're, you know, you're, you're changing a structure, then yes, you need a permit. If you want something that needs someone that has a license, plumber, an electrician, yes, you need a permit. Do you need a permit to take off and replace siding? No, you know, do you need a, a permit to change a roof? No, not unless you're changing the pitch of your roof.
Your footprint of it.
You know, I don't think people should have to get a permit to change their roof.
It's only if, it's only if, um, you're changing, if you're adding, you know, I'm saying.
Right now, I think we're supposed to get a permit, ain't you, by our code, you're not supposed to?
Not for.
That, why, 'cause, and I'm not sure, 'cause we don't have anything that specifies, like, a specific list, I call them, and just ask them, and.
And we have done, plus you also have the International Building Codes, and they, they don't require it either, so, I mean, you could require it, but I don't. I mean, I don't, I, I don't think, again, that's undue, you know.
I don't think we should charge people for trying to keep their past.
And I agree.
That's like re-filling the house, and you have to have, you shouldn't have to have a permit to re-filling your house.
To make repairs.
Something like that.
See, and I, I don't know, I mean, I think that falls into that, that's that gray area where, I wouldn't know, so I'd call them and ask them, because you're still hiring a licensed contractor, so.
What'd be added to your salary.
That's the difference.
Yeah, and that, and that's a, where you sign the home and rent data kind of thing, if you, you won't.
But you still have to, I mean, the, if the contractor would have to get one, you would have to get one too.
Well, see, 'cause I didn't even know you had to have a, a permit for, like, HVAC replacement, I have, like, a company called me, and they're like, I need to get a, I'm like, what do you need a permit for? To change that HVAC, and it's up here in Nelson X. Like, it'll be, and it's in our fee schedule, and we do have stuff for it, but it's, I mean, legitimate companies know to call me a permit, so there's.
I don't think in the past, we just gone out and checked to see if people were having a war, and not gonna do it, but.
And if they're, if they're a licensed company, come out and do it, you know, clearly the company. And I don't think we should be permanent off you either, when you're going and.
But most people also.
We need clear, concise answers, so if somebody's calling me, I know more or less, and there's still gonna be times that, you know, even whenever you're looking through these things, that there's still some gray area there. Where it's, you call them, get an answer on.
But because of that International Building Code, contractors, licensed contractors knows what they need, they know what they need, they, they know what they need a permit for too, so. And the latest copy of that's twenty eighteen, and I told Kelsey, a total worse one, so we would have it, so we can visualize, we can get a visual on that one. Can we, can I get a motion to adopt, um, Pickens fee schedule?
Make a motion to adopt Pickens fee schedule on the.
I'll say.
The, the permitting separate.
Do you want that to be same as theirs if they change it in the future, or you just want to adopt this one as it is right now?
The present by using.
The one that's.
They are saying the one they have now, because I know they're changing stuff, so I would wait and see what's coming down the line.
And then we need to re-adopt, yeah, yeah.
Just be specific about that, I guess, I don't know, vote in a minute if you're adopting this particular.
So can I get a motion to approve, to approve the, the current Pickens fee schedule?
Make a motion, we approve the current Pickens fee schedule.
And I need a second.
I'll say.
James, all favor? You may, thank you, okay. Next is to, um, to discuss and vote on what requires building permits, and that's what you have.
That's the stuff from Cherokee and stuff that I discussed.
It looks like law grounds even more restricted, they will fire up their all renovation access.
Yeah.
Which is not.
Well, I think it's still copy and pay, I think it's the same thing that Cherokee has, like, if you look at it.
Can we, we started long before.
Yeah, that's what we have, I'm not voting on this one.
Yeah, this one, so.
There's stuff that we need answers to, so when people are calling and asking me, it's not, um, I mean, I mean, email Jeff and ask him.
Ask the building inspector, I mean.
Oh, yeah, well, like, we'll ask him.
Because sometimes, I think they leave them vague a little bit, because I think.
Exactly, it's a question.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes, at the, 'cause I looked at this.
Everyone you ask tells you something different, too.
And that's exactly. I called Ball Ground this week, and I had one lady tell me you did need a permit for siding, I had somebody else call down there, and they said you didn't even.
Eric Walmart said no.
I called Pickens County, and the same thing happened, the people I talked to, the girl I talked to on the phone, yeah, yeah, because consider renovation, that's how we know, so we know to come in and check it for, for increase in tax value. And then the girl, the one that actually called me back said no, because it's not, you know, you're not doing anything structurally, so.
So we have questions of what's re, uh, what's required, um, what requires a building permit on here, they have new construction additions, including patios, decks, and porches, renovation work, including new doors, windows, remodeling, um, involving electrical and plumbing, and storage sheds over two hundred square feet. Um, what they have as does not would be counter painting, wallpaper tile, carpeting cabinets, countertop, storage sheds under two hundred square feet, fences under seven foot tall, and re, uh, retain, retaining walls under four feet tall. Patios and deck permits and porches is a hundred bucks, electrical is a hundred, and plumbing is a hundred, doors and windows is a hundred. Um, it says doors and windows permit are not required for every single event replacement, uh, permit is required for extensive replacements such as over fifty percent of the windows, um, and fifty percent of the doors. So I guess that's if somebody's coming in remodeling, changing out all the windows and all the other doors and. So take, keep, keep, keep your eye on that one, and if you guys think of something else, take a look at what we have, if you want, Kelsey to email you, what's current, what we currently have right now, to, we don't have anything there?
Well, it's not usually in a county or city's ordinances, it's instead on the website, it's just kind of this vague thing, and, and I, it must, I'm presuming it is somewhere in the building, and I'll look into that and see.
According to Lamar, it's, it's kind of written into the International Building Code, but then it's whether, like, you would have to go and work to specify to.
Probably, it must not have a convenient list.
No, there's not.
Well, I think that's why the county is, in, like, Cherokee County started doing this, I know Pickens is, is working on something similar, just to give an idea of what you do and you're not needed for, so when people ask, you can at least, here's, here's a starting point.
Do you think the reading Cherokee is kind of vague?
It is, and it leaves it vague, so, I mean, 'cause there's times that there's an exception to every rule.
So, you know, like Pickens, uh, like on the deck, you could replace your deck, and it's not with two hundred square feet.
Well, they told me the other day that as long as you're not changing the footprint, so if you're making it bigger, then.
So you turn your existing one down, and put one back, it's likely, you know, hot.
Exactly.
Remember, in some ways, it's the opposite, if they make you have a permit, some, I represented a debt company at one point, and that's something they were complaining about, that.
Yeah.
They have to go get a permit everywhere, and they go do debts, and.
And again, and there's money taught you, 'cause that was the first thing they got, so, I don't, there's nothing, and that's what I'm saying, we just need something, something, so when people call, I don't, um, I don't know. And I'm the only one here to answer the phone, so.
What we'll do with this one here, we'll, we'll come back at it in September, give everybody an opportunity to, to review, think about it, and then if you, if you have any questions to ask, call down, and we can get whatever information that you're, that you're looking at from our building, um, code and stuff, and.
Just don't make a stricter on people, where they can't do anything.
No.
Oh, no.
Hundred percent agree.
We just need something, because right now, I mean, there's times that I probably made people get permits for things that they didn't need, I've made a guy get a permit to have his driveway checked, 'cause we weren't sure where things stood. That Pickens doesn't require you to get them, we don't have anything that says if you do or not, and Cherokee does require you to get them, so I probably.
Oh, for sure, this is.
Well, to check to, to connect to a road, and I called William, and I talked to him, and he goes, technically, you don't have to get it, but everything was, it's that gray thing, so we did just a, it was a base permit fee, thirty dollars, to have, and go put eyes on it, 'cause it was on Ravis Mountain, like, near where the, the, it starts to slow down, and he was fine with it, I mean, we, I didn't have any problems with him, but, you know, just little things like that, that, you know, thirty bucks, that, you know, we're on killing with it, and that way it covers us and covers him, and everything's fine, I think hey, coffee, and the rest of it's something that anyone can serve.
Yeah, and too, I think this list here is relatively small, I mean, that's the, the list what, what requires a building permit, it's kind of small.
And it keeps it vague.
And it does, it keeps it kind of vague, and it, you know, but it covers us at the same time, so, take a look at that, if there's something else we need to add to that, um, or you guys wanna see added to it, um, then we can, we can add it and then put it back on the agenda for September, so let's say, if it. This one, we're up here at the one, and if, the very first one says what requires a building permit, that's the, that's the, there's four things on here in Cherokee.
They know the Cherokee package here. It's just two fingers.
I was expecting you.
Yeah, but it just said. It's right before F.
Um, have anything that you, you want added or subtracted back into Kelsey by, um, the fifth of September?
That may be a vague to September seventeen, number change, fourteen. Because it must be the cover of two thousand and four, and this can't be all, because it, it's seven, it's like today.
So if we have, if we have, um, anything to add back in to you by the fifth, then we can put something together and put it out.
That's decided.
So have, have any changes or any additions to building permits or not required, um, back into Kelsey by the fourth?
I'll try to meet that same deadline for, for those changes.
Yeah, so we gotta discuss, I mean, just, gotta get the science back.
Oh, you can send it out in advance.
Um, item F, discuss and vote, uh, write off old property tax bill errors, and Kelsey, I know that's what you've been working on, and why you take that one?
This is the, um, I'm not going into specifics, but this, this is our current, um, arrears list, the ones in commas are the ones that have credits, which we're also gonna have to deal with too. If you go down towards the bottom of the first page, the ones that are, um, starts with like the one oh four, seven oh one, a lot of the ones, the ones there, and some of them will have a P after it. Um, and they run down about halfway down the second page, these are the specific ones right now, a lot of these people, these are like personal property taxes for boats, for, um, equipment taxes, um, there, there's like two or three different categories you get taxed on, like items, so it's not like the taxes on your house or, or whatever, a lot of these people do not live here, they did not live here, apparently, for the years that they were taxed on. The one that has the particularly high balance, I know I've talked to James about this, because he's a little person, and he did not live in the city during this time. Um, but because it, I guess it wasn't done through the county, it just keeps adding up and showing us arrears on our tax register. But I talked to the auditor, and she said, we don't want record, it's, so as long as I can verify that it's legitimate, it's also made to say, no, it wasn't mine, I didn't know that, da-da-da, that we can write it off, but it just has to be public record, that it was, um, council approved. Da-da-da, there's some of it, I know, 'cause we have some parcels that were duplicates, that I could go in and verify one parcel that they had paid it, or shown them, and not paid it, those I could go in, and we're gonna be taking care of some of those, because you can see, right, it was clearly a screw in the system. But, anyway, some of these are ones that, some of them aren't going to be legitimate, we do, we're gonna have to deal with, but some of them are ones that, um. But some of them are ones that, um, I've had people come in, and like, we didn't even, I mean, because those who got back after long, we didn't even have, da-da-da, that year, I didn't live here in the city during these years, cause some of these go way back, this isn't like one year.
And now like, oh, just, uh, you pay that from body type, don't you?
No, you get it, you still get another tax on certain things, you, it's like both, it's like both, and then the ones like any of those, um, there's like several different category of things, and it's not a whole lot. It is like personal, taxes on personal, and, yes, those things. Yes, neither, until they kept popping up, and then like people coming in, like, angry and...
So, these that are in the currencies or they need refunds?
The ones that are currencies, I, but I still have to go back and verify that, cause there were a couple that had some weird credits, but on there were back like ten years ago.
Less than a thousand dollars.
Well, there's one, the last one on there was a credit of a hundred dollars, that's still, that was a, that was a, an utility that I still have to go back and check that one, cause, um, that, that whole thing was weird. It was a, they made a payment on it, and then somebody wanted to credit it, yeah. I'm just trying to figure it out, but, um, we're just trying to get some of these off the books, but some of them will have to have permission before they just start writing off the tax stuff, cause that's not, so, you already want a trash bill, and it was just a screw up.
So, this is not land taxes, is that what you were saying?
No, right, this one, seven, big, big, five, right in that row.
No, I'm not, that's a different one, and the ones that are like this year's things, that somebody just hasn't paid, that's different, some, there's some, and there's a few in here that we've talked about also, that, that people that live here, they just aren't paying the taxes, just straight up aren't paying. That we're gonna have to deal with, there's some that are make that have favorable returns, and they're coming in and paying them, and as long as they're paying something, I don't care, I mean, people don't have a lot of money for this stuff right now, that's fine. The top one on page three is the one that we're currently in, works with, it's about one million, same two. But I don't want that to take care of it for... And some people will intentionally overpay and leave those credits in their shoes. The bottom one on page two is one that we was talking about, they're just gonna pay it. For years, and years.
Property tax or...
Property tax.
We used to build leans.
Yeah, and I've sent it, this is an X's and...
I haven't seen that.
Been a long time?
Yeah.
We went through a whole spade of it, a number of years ago, and it leans out there and following whatever the required processes is.
I'll take a look at that with you later this week.
Yeah, the one that's four, three, four, five, the fifth one down is also not a legitimate one, I know for the fact that one's paid, it's a duplicate partial, and when I've gone in and tried to fix it, the system can't even find it for me to fix it, and so, they would print it out every season's plan on this one.
And what the county does, generates a lien every year, of course, and they file a lien every year, somebody ain't paid, and they'll eventually sell the property front bank taxes.
So, yeah, there's, there's not a whole lot of them here that we have a problem with, but there's a handful of them that just, they don't know how many times I've simple lit, and then just, I sort of certify, return receipt, to make sure, and still get nothing. One guy come in and said, pay our agency, went and paid them, and those, you're not, yeah. So, but the name of them, well, you notice one, permission to clear off the ones that are now... I'm gonna have conversations with people and...
And we research, especially the, which is what we're talking about, which one, towards the end of page one, I've talked to, he knows the guy, he got it in one here, cause this one went back like ten years. Stephen Brady, I'm following. He's a gentleman.
He didn't, he didn't need one here.
He wasn't moving now.
Yeah, but it's still generating...
You know, it's still adding up.
Yeah, and there isn't a way for me to separate it, it's showing those are past debalances on... We've gotten rid of a lot, cause it used to be like our total arrears was like closer to thirteen thousand, and we've got that doing.
Did it tell them what it's still or anything like that?
Um, it's, I think it was, like, the, or something, it was...
Yeah, it is, it was for equipment.
And it wasn't anywhere near that, most of that's penalty and interest. Yeah, arrears, it's seven fifty-four, penalty is, um, seven oh seven.
I see even more than I'm gonna tend to get in there, check there, but...
Well, I mean, I know...
He's been going down here, but...
I know, he didn't, he didn't live here.
No.
So, I mean, this doesn't matter, it's just something that just keeps going, going, and it just looks like...
Yeah, I don't know, maybe he lives at now, he's our American Jeep lights.
And we can't actively collect taxes on them, they're more than five million dollars. I mean, I didn't know that.
That house is done, but it's solid, and everybody...
So, I just want permission to write off the ones that I can verify or...
Well, I think the, probably, the why they did that, satisfied the auditor is probably you figure out which ones you can verify, don't be recharged, bring that back as a list. And have the council vote on that specific list, that's probably what it takes to satisfy the auditor. See, if the council voted on specific bills, as you wrote them out.
Yeah, and we'll go ahead and put that back on for September, and then these that we need to return, let's go ahead and get the information as well.
I have a ball on the trans, so... What did you say?
Um, the ones that, that we need to pay about are the ones that are, that are...
The credits, that's how, we'll deal with it in a few days, and then I'll deal with that, cause that, especially with big credit, maybe some, but... The small ones are like, they're happy, I can see, but it was, if it was a little payment, it was, it's just a whole other thing.
Okay, let's set a timeline for it, then, let's do that, let's do the credits for October. So, we won't write on that tonight, we'll, we'll come back with a, with a solid list in September. Next up is, uh, to discuss and vote upon the repair for Old Nelson Road, Hillside, and Cherokee Shelter.
So, to fix the, the, um, road at Hillside and Cherokee, a total payment five fifteen, also the county did, they're already out here, um, almost three times the hassle, but six hundred dollars a ton, but, uh, I want to actually go and do that one, and then get it on their schedule, while they're out here anyway. But, um, put it on with this one, because the other one that's up in front of the forty, it wasn't much bigger, he said it, it wasn't just that one little area, apparently it must have been, it was going way out.
Way of problem, not in there.
He said it was about sixty-five feet, and he said, really, he could go a little bit further each way, but that was like the worst, I had the whole email thing going, that, which may explain a little bit more, but, um, the total, that's, it was basically six hundred feet, about six feet, I think that went down maybe a foot, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, and it was, the estimate was between fifty-two seventy and fifty-four forty, and this is worst case scenario. You know, so he's given me, you know, he said it could be eight to ten guys, up to two trucks, so, whatever I was estimating, I didn't fit ten guys and two trucks, so, so there's a chance it could be a little bit less than that.
That would be a match with the one up here.
The five fifteen is the one at Hillside Cherokee, this estimate here was for the one at Old Nelson, he actually, he told me today to see if we were gonna do this one, cause I think they're planning on being out pretty soon, so if we're gonna do it, I think we're trying to get the crews lined up to, um, cause he said somebody's gone up at some point, see, it says something about concrete also, and, um, sorry, I asked somebody if it's concrete, and... I think somebody gone at some point and poured concrete in there, tried to patch it or something.
Somebody did.
And I don't know if it was the quarry people or what, cause I think he thought we might have done it, and I'm like, as far as, I know we haven't ever done anything with it, so, I don't think there was any, probably any concrete having anything to do with that, you know? Anyway, it's basically, if it's not fixed, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, it's...
Any questions?
What they think about the rock quarry, should they help out on fixing the fire and stuff like that?
I think that's all I want, I don't think they're gonna...
I mean, really, that's what I have, it's probably bad material underneath for a power...
You've got the quarry, and you have the stair company there too, it's kind of the perfect storm.
Yeah, them folks from that turn, they come out of there, that's...
I love shields, you know?
But, you know, that's, well, William called me and said they could probably do it a lot cheaper, because he don't like a mill machine, he'd like to dig it out.
And I, the, I called, um, two or three other companies, when you and I talked about, and I can't get calls back on it, and I know the county, the county's literally just giving us indirect, we're paying the labor and whatever the material cost is, there's not a bump up on anything.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the repairs for Old Nelson Road and Hillside and Cherokee Shelter?
So, I'd like a motion to approve, little repair on Old Nelson Road and Hillside Circle.
Cherokee.
Shelter, and Cherokee Shelter.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll say it.
Paul, favor? Yeah, thank you, okay. Um, executive session. You have anything for executive session?
Yes.
What's the tenant worry?
Um, it was employee for sanitation and, um, the stuff of the tree.
Yeah.
Personnel.
His personnel was sanitation.
It's like, yeah, I'm probably...
Yeah, I had information on it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'd like a motion to adjourn, say, say.
Second.
Say it.
Paul, favor? Yeah, I'm saying.
Overleaving or is just there then?